Then after that, we're going to have parks and rec. Update, grants update newsletter. Declaration of official intent of the town of Pownell to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of the indebtedness. Bond resolution for the town hall projects. Finalized ballot article. Approved CAT TV contracts. Approved redeemed mobile home funds to go back to the capital fund. And then we're going to open up another public comment for that part of the agenda. And then we're going to have an executive for legal for the forensic audit. Can I entertain a motion, please?
Make a motion when you approve the agenda.
Jamie, second. Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Aye.
Angie, aye. All right, approval of the minutes on January 7th. Did everybody read them? Can I entertain a motion, please?
Don't move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, approval of warrants. Payroll ending 11021 for $8,870.17. Accounts payable. Ending 1152021. For $101,962.14. We have the Benton County Sheriff for Pownell Patrol for $6,660. We have. Part of graphic technology, which is tax maps maintenance for $3,525. We have the Town of Benton for $1,200. We have the VLCT insurance packet, which is all our insurance together. For $85,746. Can I entertain a motion?
Angie, could I ask, could I ask that the warrants be separated? Payroll?
Are in the payroll. I am so sorry.
That's okay.
So we need to have a motion on the payroll ending 11021. Mike is on.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve these warrants for payroll for 110. 2021.
Second?
I got it.
All right, Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Obstein.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, and then now I need a motion for accounts payable. Ending 1152021.
I'll make a motion for the accounts payable.
Can I have a second? Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. All right, I lost my agenda. There it is. Or liaison report, that would be Rebecca.
Okay, should I turn this towards me or should I just leave it out?
You can turn it towards me.
Yeah, all right. Okay. So. As promised, I have a presentation on our fiscal year 2019. Audit, and we also have Cynthia Stoddard here from Nemrick, and I just have her on. Camera since she's coming up next. She's going to help us understand these results, but first I'm going to do a little presentation on them. So I want to start by saying that. January 12th, which was two nights ago, in the evening, the town finally received. Our fiscal year 2019 external audit report. So as I've stated in multiple other. Public meetings, this was significantly delayed due to circumstances out of the town's control. So I have made an entire packet that includes my summaries of the audit, and it's also going to include the full audit and management letters. All of that will be made available. Online, probably tomorrow morning and on the Facebook page, et cetera, et cetera. So first, I'm going to talk about. Or nets here, if you go to the fifth page. In this little packet of mine. I have my synopsis of the audit, and I'm going to just read that. These are just mostly quotes directly from the audit report, okay? And. So quote, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly. In all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities. Each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of Town of Pownell as of June 30th, 2019. And the respective changes in financial position for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." Financial highlights, the town's general fund expenditures were $121,400 less than budgeted due to controlled spending in response to current economic conditions. Town's road fund expenditures were $69,630 more than budgeted due to increased costs and wages. Not budgeted for. Total net position decreased $897,452. This was predominantly due to depreciation of the wastewater treatment facility. Changes in net position, the town's fiscal year 2019 revenue totaled 2,632,193. Property taxes and charges for services accounted for most of the town's revenue by contributing 64% and 17%, respectively of every dollar raised. The remainder came from state and federal aid, operating grants, and other miscellaneous sources. The total cost of all programs and services totaled $3,529,645 for fiscal year 2019. The majority of this amount was used for wastewater operations expense, 47%. Road construction equal to 22% of that amount, and general service at 16% journal services. And that leaves. About 15%, which I believe is, maybe Cynthia will be able to speak to that later. It's probably a bunch of. The smaller things that don't all go under one category, but I can get more information on that. It's probably. It is, everything is detailed out in the final report. Yeah. Quote, "We noted no transactions entered into by the town during the year for which there is a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. All significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period." Quote, "We encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing our audit." Quote, "Professional standards requires to accumulate all known and likely misstatements identified during the audit. Other than those that are trivial and communicate them to the appropriate levels of management. Management has corrected all such misstatements. In addition, none of the misstatements detected as a result of audit procedures and corrected by management were material. Either individually or in the aggregate to each opinion unit's financial statements taken as a whole." Quote, "For purposes of this letter, a disagreement with management is a financial accounting, reporting, or auditing matter. There are not resolved to our satisfaction that could be significant to the financial statements of the auditor's report. We are pleased to report that no such disagreements arose during the course of our audit." During our audit, we became aware of matters that are not necessary to be reported in the required reports. However, we are presenting them here for your consideration. And what follows next is what is, what is from the management letter, which are the observations and recommendations. Sorry, I'm multitasking. I have to let someone in the meeting. There we go. These are the observations and recommendations, generally speaking, of the entire, the results of the audit. So it's in three areas. Journal entries. The observation is, "We noted that journal entries are prepared and posted by the treasurer with no formal review of the entries." Sorry, I have people coming in and I need to let them in. "We noted that journal entries are prepared and posted by the treasurer with no formal review of the entries." Recommendation, "To ensure. All. Journal entries are valid and appropriate, an individual independent of the journal entry preparation process should perform. A monthly documented review of all journal entries posted for the preceding month." This person? And I wrote a note after this, which is, "This lack of quote formal review is due to lack of capacity, not due to intentionally negligent practices. And this will be explained and addressed by Cynthia from Nemrick, who's here with some simple solutions that she's going to offer for us." Payroll, the observation is, "Time cards and/or time sheets for certain employees are not approved until the monthly select board meeting." Recommendation, "To help ensure that salary and wages are paid for time worked and are properly classified as to job title. The town should consider implementing a documented review and approval of all time cards and time sheets. By an appropriate individual prior to payroll being prepared. The time cards and time sheets document should document the time, the position. Time in and time out. In addition, this review should also include documented review of the related payroll, tax, and fringe benefit calculations." And my note that I've added to these notes here is, "After speaking with Cynthia, she has made some very simple suggestions to address this, which she will present. I can say that there are some departments that already have this verification pre-payroll, such as the road department. Transfer station, planning commission, and DRB, and the wastewater treatment facility. The others are simple, uh, simple to rectify and can be done by select board members, et cetera." The third area. Of suggestions comes under batch processing. The observation is, "During our testing, we noted that the town processes and records transactions in batches and records them in a general ledger via journal entries. Which as previously noted, are not reviewed or approved. The recommendation is, "The town should consider using the financial accounting software to its fullest extent. By implementing or enhancing the use of the cash receipts, cash dispersments, payroll, and purchasing modules. Use of these modules will eliminate the need for journal entries to record certain transactions. Provide a more effective and efficient audit trail. And provide for more detailed reports for the board to review and analyze monthly. It will also allow for greater segregation of duties by allowing for the more efficient recording of transactions." My note on this one is, and again, these are, my notes are all based on my conversation with Cynthia. Is that this is another lack of capacity issue. In other words, we don't own the software. So Cynthia will speak about what it means to have transactions that are quote not approved. That term, not approved. Means something different in accounting than in general conversation. Unapproved does not mean illegal, and it does not even mean inappropriate. It is a, it speaks to a financial system weakness. So I'm going to ask Cynthia to speak more deeply about that. It's, yes, it's a checks and balance. It's, but I think people hear the word unapproved and. And it, they hear illegal, okay? I've heard that. So general statement, I'm going to make some general statements about the forensic audit. The town entered into a forensic audit in 2019 after concerns of waste, fraud, and abuse were brought forward to the select board. Receipt of a final report was delayed by many months. After multiple communications with the forensic auditing firm, the town was finally provided with some documentation. That was not, was deemed incomplete by the select board. Because of this, the town is currently working through its attorney to come to contractual completion with the forensic auditor. This is the nature of the executive session this evening, and the hope is that shortly we should have resolution in this matter. And once we come to legal resolution, I can present on this if the board wishes me to, and we will obviously make all those materials public. I have to let someone in the meeting. Hold on. And I can say the following things about the forensic audit. In documentation, it was reiterated, and I have two quotes. That no fraudulent activities were noted during our work, and also we did not find. We did not find, and this is referring to the records that they audited, financial fraud incidents. Material transaction errors not yet corrected in your financial records. Misappropriated funds, non-accessible records, or actionable misuse of funds. So those are the things that they did not find. Okay? A copy of the documentation. Provided to us by the forensic auditor that we're working on getting to completion with was provided to Cynthia from Nemrick. Who has reviewed it. She also watched the select board meeting. Where our forensic auditor gave a final verbal report to the board and the public. She will speak on her observations tonight. I can say this, that the findings exactly match. What our external auditors have observed and recommended, not just in this present report, but over the past couple of years. A copy of the documentation was provided to VEMR's. And VEMR's has confirmed with the town that as quote far as they are concerned. Pownell is and always has been in legal compliance with the municipal retirement system, uh, retirement payments to elected officials and hired employees. This forensic audit cost the town upwards of $60,000. Its delay directly caused the delay of the forensic, uh, the fiscal year 2019 external audit. As well as, um, say, a very large documentation of allegations that they had to weed through. The town was, was, and is in no way attempting to suppress release of audit findings. Rather, these, you know, reports were delayed through no cause of our own. So fiscal year 2020, the delay in the fiscal year 2019 only being released to the town. Two nights ago. Has caused a slight, slight delay in the 2020 audit getting started. However, the hope is that it will be complete before town meeting. I can, have no guarantees of this, but I've really asked them, please, can we have this before town meeting? So that we are voting on audited numbers. Although I have no guarantee of this, I've requested that, and this auditing work has begun. They've set up the portal. And I believe both Ellen and I are going to have some sign in on that. But that's getting started. And then before I release Cynthia to actually help us understand all of this and offer us a bunch of solutions to everything, to our system weaknesses. I'm, I'm going to talk very briefly on. The, the statute, state level requirements of towns and auditing and what auditors are required. Statutorily speaking. So according to Vermont statute, towns are required to have either elected internal auditors or hire a CPA for an annual audit. The statute reads as such. "A town may vote by ballot at an annual meeting to eliminate the office of town auditor. If a town votes to eliminate the office of town auditor, the select board shall contract with a public accountant. Licensed in this state to perform an annual financial audit of all funds of the town. Except the funds audited pursuant to 16 VSA 323," that refers to school supervisory unions. Unless otherwise provided by law, the select board shall provide for all other auditors duties to be performed. That's generally the town report. The trend of Vermont towns eliminating the position of internal auditor is also described in, literally in the state Vermont handbook for elected auditors. It actually has its own chapter. It's chapter two, and it comes before they actually talk about how to audit anything. And this is what that chapter reads. It says that under 17 VSA 2651B, "A town may vote by ballot at an annual town meeting to eliminate the office of auditor. This authority extends to all towns, whether or not they have a charter provision covering election of auditors. If the town does vote to eliminate the office of auditor, the select board of the town will then contract with a certified public accountant. Who is licensed in Vermont to perform an annual audit of all town funds. The select board must also provide for all other services. The elected auditors previously performed, including production of the annual town report. Section 2651B also provides that the terms of office of the auditors who are in office. When the town votes to eliminate the office will expire in the 45th day after the vote. Or on the date when the select board first contracts with a public accountant, whichever happens first." And then it goes on to say this. "Each year, as municipal budgets grow and sources of revenue become more diverse. The task of auditing municipal financial records becomes more difficult. Presently, there is no legal requirement that locally elected auditors have an education or experience in bookkeeping or accounting. And as a result, reliance on locally elected auditors can sometimes create a false sense of municipal financial security. Accordingly, while VLCT continues to support the election of local auditors in their work. We recommend that towns that not, have not voted to eliminate office of auditor, obtain periodic or regular audits from a certified public accountant." So as most of you know, I think, Pownell was never out of compliance with the state statute. And our books have never been unaudited. We've always engaged with an external auditor who audits the books annually, and that remains unchanged. We are still in contract with an, with a annual audit. And there is a consideration that I wrote here, "Given that Vermont statute requires either one or the other elected or hired auditors. By reinstating elected auditors, the town is left in a position where a future board could decide to do away with the annual professional audit. As it would no longer be required by law. You only have to have one or the other." I really seriously doubt that would ever happen. I would be shocked if that ever happened, but it is a consideration that I feel obliged to put out there. Yeah, food for thought. "The identified material weaknesses by our external auditors identify needs that, that we have that auditors cannot fill. Auditors cannot actually affect the books in any way. The needs that have been identified are related to capacity. Places where we don't have the staff or resources to meet those needs, such as approvals. Even with elected auditors, we would, we will still not have solved Pownell's need for more checks and balances. These needs, however, can be met by Nemrick, and that's where Cynthia comes in tonight. She's here to help us better understand. These things that I've just read and talked about, and she, she has a lot of experience. I'm going to unmute you Cynthia, and she also. Is, um. She is going to stay here. After her presentation, and she will answer anyone's questions. She's here to help. So I'm going to turn you back towards the board Cynthia, and, oh wait, let me give sharing. Yeah?
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Just so that everybody knows, once, once Cynthia is done with her presentation. Um, we're going to follow the same format. Three minutes for questions.
And comments to Cynthia? Sure. And she said she's happy to take comments. And also. If you're here to make comments about anything audit, Nemrick. This is your time right after Cynthia. Everything else is going at the end. We will have another, another public comment section. So I'm going to turn you back towards the board. I think I got the board in there pretty much. All right. Go ahead Cynthia. We can all see you, even if you can't.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, as she said, my name is Cynthia Stoddard, and I live in Westminster, Vermont. I'm just going to give you a little bit of an overview because I don't know how. Much you guys know about Nemrick or, but I'll try to keep it as brief as I can, and a little bit about my background, just so people can get to know me. So. Um, I have, um, lived in Westminster for 30 years now, probably, I guess it is. And I started my municipal career as the elected director for the town of Westminster. I shortly after that met Ernie, who is the president of Nemrick. He asked me if I had a desire to work there. I was raising small kids, and so I said, yeah, and we, that's when I started to work at home for him. Shortly, maybe five or six years after that, I was the town of Putney, Vermont contracted Nemrick to. Be the finance director because they had had an audit where they had several findings. They needed to straighten out their. Straighten out their systems. A lot of the things that are similar to what you guys are being, are as being pointed out to you guys are the same things that they went through. So I went in there one day a week as their finance director, um, five years. Probably four years after I started doing that, the manager left and they hired me as their town manager. So I was. The town manager and the finance director in Putney for five years, and then decided that I would rather help several towns than just one. So Ernie hired me back, and I'm back in my role that I was previous as director of support and training. So. I've been on almost every side of the table. I've been in the administrative part. I've been an elected official and, um. I have been a finance director. I've gone through several audits. So I, I think, so when Rebecca contacted me to try to find out what we were all about, and, and if there was something we could do to help, and. Could we figure out what it was that the board or that the auditor was saying about the system that they weren't using it to its full capacity? That's kind of how we got that conversation started. And one of the things that she learned during that first discussion was that we're not just a software company. We actually are, we are a software company probably second to our, more of our consulting. That's why we're New England Municipal Resource Center. We're a resource center for Vermont municipalities. So. My focus over the last 20 years has really been in. Going to towns, helping them with policies and procedures, getting them caught up with some things, just filling in that gap. Of capacity that they, they don't have, and, and it's not because they don't want to have it. It, it's money constraints. It's. Lack of qualified people within the area that you're in. There, there's just a lot of small towns that are out there doing their best to try to, to hold it together. And over the years, like she was saying, the, the requirements have gotten, um, more difficult. There's more money. There's more grants out there. There's a lot of things coming in. And so you have to kind of go with that and, and change your processes a little bit. And, and like with anything, as. Bad things happen, it, it then puts more rules on everybody else. So. So that, that was where the conversation started. I told her about a couple of the clients that I work with currently, that we, we structure our. Our consulting services around your needs as a town. We find out where those holes are. If you don't want to hire somebody part-time as an employee or as a full-time employee to fill those holes, that's where we can help you. So the, the first thing that I did was really just look at, I grabbed your, 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 because, because we have a support contract with you guys. And, and what that covers is if someone has a question about using the software, they can call our support line. You get all of the updates of our software, any new enhancements and all of that. So. That's a service you guys pay for. We have some people that call daily. We have some people that I don't hear from for, you know, two or three weeks at a time, sometimes three. Every third month. So it's just a matter of what their needs are, but we're there every day for that, that service. But the, the, the thing I want to say about listening to, um, your forensic auditor at that meeting, I think it was in December of last year, he came. So I watched the meeting and nothing that he said really surprised me or shocked me that was going on. It, it, the things that. The things that he was concerned with, the journal entries not being approved, some of the processes leading up to. Financial tasks that need to be done were all things that I've heard in every town that I've worked in. So nothing, I didn't get anything out of his, um, report that made me, you know, kind of catch my breath and say, oh God, that's going on. So. And then when I saw the findings from the audit, your regular financial audit. If you read findings that in any small town that's struggling a little bit with their finances, these are the typical. Things that they find. And, and really it's just lack of capacity and people to help segregate those duties. So. The one thing that really stood out to me that felt like we could kind of conquer for you as the first one. Was to eliminate the number of journal entries that get done in your system. So I'm just going to share my screen if I can be that technologically savvy.
I gave her chair permissions, yeah, and Ellen's going to come over so she can see.
You need to tell me, can you see what I'm?
No.
Not yet.
Not yet. Let me just double check and make sure. Wait a minute, I forgot to, here, hold on.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, so do you see the, there's a document that I sent.
I made paper copies of all of this for the board members that are here, okay?
Okay, and so. What you're seeing is the cash receipts, and it talks about every transaction, right? You can see that right now. Screen, so I want to make sure I'm showing the right one. Okay. So. The, the, let me pull it. The boxes that are in like the orange color, which is their tax administration, utility billing, grand list, accounts payable, payroll, and general ledger. Those are the, uh, those are the pieces of the Nemrick software that you own now and that you're utilizing. Did I get them all, Ellen?
The ones for the accounting part, yes.
Yeah.
Julie, uh, the town clerk has other ones, but this, this is.
Right, I strictly just stuck to the, the accounting ones.
Yep.
So those are the ones that you're currently utilizing. So those are the ones that you're currently utilizing. And if you look in the middle, I stuck the general ledger in the middle because that's where all of the information gets funneled to. That's where you're going to be able to produce reports for yourselves, for the public. Um, that's where they're going to be auditing, so everything that funnels into that has to be accurate and represent. What it is that you have done um financially. Um, so. The. Bulk of what is going in there is. You've got accounts payable and payroll, those items right now. Are funneling over to the general ledger through a transfer mechanism. The it's processed and then the um. The batch is then transferred to the general ledger for it to update your information. So that's not what they're talking about, that the journal entries aren't getting done. Your expenses, for the most part, are being tracked through an automated process. And Ellen, if at any point I say something that's not quite right, if you could just jump in for me?
Yes, I will.
Okay, um. The utility billing software and I I noticed, I think you just bill for sewer, is that true?
Correct.
Okay, so the utility billing software is a is a function of sending out bills for sewer. Receiving those bills, sending out late notices, that kind of thing, so it's a billing and a um receivable program. When when that is processed. I believe right now that is not transferred to the general ledger, you do a journal entry for those.
No, I do not, those are transferred.
Those are transferred, okay.
Yes, they are.
Okay, so that that function does not need to have a journal entry done.
No, it does not.
The tax administration program, which is the the program where you receive property taxes. Um, and. That's the receivable program, you can send out delinquent notices, that one is not linked.
It is not.
Right, so a lot of the revenue, which which property taxes is the bulk of your revenue. Um. They're having to do a journal entry or a posting to the general ledger to account for that money. So that is a um, that's a quick one we could do where we could link it similar to the way we link utility billing. So that those. Manual entries that are being done are eliminated, so when you print a posting register report of journal entries, that's not going to show up on it. So that eliminates a lot of the. And I think that's what the auditor, the CPA firm that just finished your two thousand and nineteen audit was talking about with batch processing. So to pull that all together so that you don't. Um, there isn't any of the receipts that are coming in where you have to do any journal entries. You can get a piece of software from us called the cash receipts module, that's the one in blue and this is the one you don't have right now. So that module is one where it really acts like, we like to say it acts like a cash register. Like people come in, they make payments, there are codes associated with it, those codes are associated to. A particular revenue line in your financials. So it just, you you enter those, you can give the person a receipt. There's one central location to input all of the information for money that comes into your office. That then gets distributed to tax administration, utility billing, so that it can update those modules, so people's accounts are showed as paid. Then you transfer it all to the general ledger. So all of those things that are being done and so the miscellaneous cash receipts are things like um. And and you may not have some of these, but these are some typical ones, let's say, well, grant money, um zoning applications. Um, dog licenses, town clerk fees, re- all of those things that are not a billing of of property taxes or utilities. Have to come through the system, get deposited into the bank and there needs to be a mechanism for tracking that. So the cash receipts is that that all encompassing mechanism that then distributes it to where it needs to go. So that one um piece of software and this linking process to make sure that it gets to your financial statements and shows in the right accounts. Would clear up. I would say. Well, at least two of the findings that you have on your your. Um, now I'm I'm concentrating more on the two thousand and nineteen audit than the forensic one because they were pretty much the same. Findings, I I I don't remember in the forensic one if there was anything different, was was there Rebecca?
Um, no, not in terms of that, no. I gotta let this person in, sorry.
Yeah. So, um. The the other thing that I put on here, does anybody have any questions about that process, I know? Um.
Can I, can I ask you just to talk briefly about what approvals are and like, because I think that, you know, without authorization. Journal entries without approvals, because I I really want people to understand that that's not. Ellen doing something without permission, that's Ellen not having the resource to fully account in a way and account an auditor wants to see it, correct?
So, yep, so let me just, let me go over this other, this other thing on this page and then I'm going to stop sharing for a minute, but. So every transaction has a source document and this this will cover what you just asked too is. Every financial transaction, we all know that has a source document. We have a time card, we have a um, we have an invoice, we have a property tax bill, we have a utility bill, somebody hands us a check. Every source document. That you get needs to be entered into some part of a financial system to make it so that your financial statements can't come out to the way they need to be. Each of those source documents have to have some type of approval process. So it all starts with that document and the procedures leading up to whatever it is you need to do to that document. So as an example, the time cards which which someone mentioned. Um, the the guys that work for the highway department, the road foreman or superintendent of the road or whatever the position is. They're the ones that know whether Joe Smith was at work all day and put in eight hours, so that's the person that needs to sign off on that. That's the first level of approval and then then so on. As far as journal entries are concerned, because just because we do all of this work. And and try to eliminate as many journal entries as we can, there are still going to be journal entries that need to be done. We, as an example, we get an invoice, somebody puts a code on it, an expense code. That code was, let's say the numbers were transposed or when it got entered in the system, it. Was mistakenly put in for a different account number. That is found that it's not classified to the right account, so you need to reclassify it to the correct expense account. That's a journal entry that the auditor, those are the only kinds of journal entries that you should end up with, really. Are correcting mistakes and that's where the oversight needs to come from someone. Um, so, so as. What I find in the small towns is when you have not many people in in the building to do the work. And who's going to sign this approval? And really understand what it even means is difficult to find that person. So that has been an area that we have filled in that role. Uh, I can tell you the town of Callis. That's what I do for them on a monthly basis, they send me the journal entries. I look at them, if I have questions, I ask for the source document as to why it was changed and then if there was approval on it, what made it happen? And then I sign off on it because I understand the accounting side of it and I understand the effects on the financial statements. So um, so yes, just the. Like Rebecca said earlier, saying that it's not approved doesn't mean that it's not okay. It means that it just needs that second set of eyes on it to make sure that it's properly. Properly done and should have been done.
And that has to be someone who is authorized to approve.
Correct. Correct, and you know, I've I've had discussions with auditors before when I when I help a small town. And there, you know, I'm like, well, who who would be acceptable to approve it? It needs to be somebody that understands what they're looking at. And sometimes it's difficult to find and that's why we've filled in on that role. Um, because I I've worked in towns before that the town manager would sign off on it, but. They didn't really understand what they were, they were just initialing stuff I handed them. So for me, if you're going to set a procedure in place that has been called out by somebody, then it needs to make sense as to who's doing it. Because if it's just somebody putting initials on something, it's not going to, it's not, it's not fulfilling its purpose.
Correct. Cynthia, can I, can I just say something?
Yeah, I just stopped sharing my screen, okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, it's, yeah, I can, I think I can hear you.
Okay, so it's Ellen.
Yeah.
Um, so with the journal entries, just to clarify for people that are watching. Uh, years ago, select board members, because we didn't have all of our um modules uh linked to the general ledger. Years ago, there was a select board that did not understand what they were reading when I gave them a um, a report from like the. The bank account in our general ledger, I would do a detail. Because it wasn't broken down when it was in there, it was just a deposit for five hundred dollars. Well, they would say what was in that deposit. So now, so I had, they requested that I do each bank deposit as a journal entry. And label it as such, such as cash receipts, verification fee and that deposit was twenty five dollars. So my journal entries have increased tremendously because we looked back before then. We didn't have hundreds of journal entries, we would do one, you know. You, on Friday, you did your week's journal entries and you had, you know, five thousand dollars deposited deposited to your general fund. And then it would all go to your revenue lines. So it was easier for me to trace, but they didn't, they couldn't figure it out when they read the detail for, say, the bank account. So they're the ones that recommended all the journal entries. I have, I've cut that back again because the board now asked me if they have a question. And um, but I agree with the cash receipts, that will definitely. That will definitely help out and I I don't know why the tax administration was never linked with our general ledger. I wasn't sure when that was set up.
Yeah.
So I I have no idea why we never linked it. Um, maybe because back then we didn't. I I don't know.
It it could have just been one of those, I mean, and I've seen that, I just worked with another town that we just barely linked them and they've been with us for years and. It just is the nature of setting up this software years ago and and years ago, just so everybody knows. The, I I think I was talking to Ernie today, who's the president of Nemrick, and he said that when we set panel up, we didn't even have a cash receipts module.
You did not back then.
Right.
I I know that because I know the previous treasurer that was involved in, because he was the one. That was involved with setting up Nemrick before I started.
Right, so some of these.
Cash receipts.
Yeah, so some of these things are just kind of, we're just catching up with some of the advances that the software has had and. And you know, in response, a lot of times to what we were finding in towns that they were getting um called out on on audits.
Right, right, because I do at this time have the, you know, one of the board members sign off on a journal entry with like in the accounts payable if there was an incorrect. Account.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that needed to be corrected, but you're correct, you know what I, what you would be looking at where. They may not understand the journal entry, I mean, I tried to write on the journal entry exactly why it was done so that they can understand that. You know, you could. That's not really what they do.
No, and really, the the select, I mean, this would be my take on it, is that unless there's a, I guess, a meeting where they designate that person as the person to do it. That really one select board member shouldn't be signing off on anything on their own. You know.
Shouldn't, but that's what was asked.
Yeah, no, I I I hear you, I'm just, yeah.
I'm just following what was recommended.
Yep.
Before and nobody's changed that yet, but this sounds like a great, you know, this is a good idea. I think.
Yeah, and I think it would, it would, you know, it would free you up a little bit, I'm not going to tell you that it's not an adjustment.
Oh, I can guarantee this is going to be very interesting.
Yeah.
But I, but I call you when I need you, so I have no worries.
Right, and I, I was going to say, I think we have enough relationship that it's not going to be difficult to.
No, I don't think so.
It's just going to be a learning curve, so.
Absolutely.
But um, I don't know. I don't know what this means though for the, I do know the town clerk has a separate checking account, is that true?
She does at this time.
So one, that's one thing that we were talking about and based on, um, I don't know, you made the recommendation when on our conversation. That she, you know, you pointed out, although I just want to talk about this aspect of our conversation, you pointed out that she makes a very similar rate every year in fees. And that. If she were to take or earn that same rate in salary. It would relieve her of all of that um accounting that she does, it would allow her to go on the town EIN number. And if she has access and linkage to the entire system in Nemrick. Therefore now we could merge her financials and we have spoken to our town clerk, she's actually here, I don't, if she wants to speak on it. But she is, she's very positive about that change. Um, and the and going on the town EIN number and um merging, as I said. You know, so that everything is accounted in one place, audited in the same place, recorded in the same place. So that's a really positive development.
Does she want to speak to it or can I say, I didn't want to interrupt her?
Yeah, Julie, do you want to? You want to unmute Jules?
Can taxpayers ask questions prior to seeing, we've just changed the topic?
We are going to have, we are going to have a public comment as soon as we're done with this presentation. And that will be to Cynthia regarding anything we're talking about now, go ahead Julie.
I am here.
Julie, any questions for the, for me before I, I I just kind of wanted to give you an overview. Of what that would look like and what I think your concerns could be. And I may, you may want to just tell me your concerns first before I assume what they are, but.
Well, I know like, I, obviously I use the Nemrick and I do with like the animal license and I can enter my, the amount for. The fees and all that come out, my land records do, the only one that doesn't come out with a money amount is in my marriage module.
Mm-hmm.
So those are the the only three that I. Modules that I use for, you know, to keep track of my record, other than like. For my copies and stuff like that, I have my receipts and I do my own spreadsheet and I turn in. So I like copy all my checks, I put them on a spreadsheet and. That I did per the auditors before and then. Had several other auditors check it out and. So we still have issues with my spreadsheet being hard that. To understand it and how to make my money like mad where I'm not accused of, you know, like taking money or.
Right, so. So that's what I think that. This is, let me just give you the scenario of. Let me just give you the scenario of what I think it could look like, okay? It that the town clerk has. And 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 I don't want to, I don't want to step on anybody's toes about structure of pay. So don't make sure you you don't misunderstand me saying that this is how you should do it and you have to do it, okay? But this is.
I do constructive criticism better.
Well, I'm not even criticizing, what you guys have been doing is not different than other towns have done, so. Um, so what I see in most towns is the town clerk. Um, is either an elected or an appointed position. Um, either, whether they're elected or appointed, they pretty much are treated the same way as far as being an employee. They get a salary, they have the benefits. And the amount of money that's being brought into the town for the fees. That you charge pretty much cover the salary, just like what's happening now. So that's why I kind of looked back a few years to see like what has been your average annual amount. And based on what you've collected for fees and how could you make a salary work there? So that then you would be getting the same paycheck every week and not having to to worry about, you know, trying to. To do that kind of um budgeting in your own life. So what happens then if if the town clerk is is. If the money is meshed, just like. Any other money coming into the town, it's just considered revenue for your general fund. Um, in the cash receipts module, you would have codes set up specific to the items that you bring in, so. So town clerk fees are typically spit, split between revenue for the town or for the, the, um, clerk, in this case, that, um, and then a state fee. Now, is there a state fee or is there restoration fee?
There's a restoration.
Restoration fee. Yeah, well, when, when somebody pays for a page to be recorded, what is the breakdown of that page?
So it's, it's fifteen dollars a page.
Yeah.
Four dollars will go into the restoration fund, and I get the eleven dollars for a fee.
Okay, so i- in the case of somebody being treated, uh, somebody being paid a salary instead of being paid on the fees that they collect, the money would just go into the general fund as a revenue for the portion, that eleven dollar portion. If you kept it where you got paid on fees, then we would actually put that into a liability account for the amount that's been collected, and when you get paid, you get paid out of that liability account. So you can use the cash receipts module for either pay structure you set up. The four dollars then would be distributed to your restoration fund automatically when you post that payment, so that that fund would have that money in it already. And when I say fund, I don't mean checkbook. I mean, fund.
No, I understand, I understand what you're talking about.
Okay, so, um, when you, when you, um, have a dog license come in, a portion of it goes to the town, a portion of it goes to the state. We set that up so that split happens when you take the money in. Um, marriage license, the portion, there's a small portion maybe that goes to the town, and then the rest goes to the state. So those, those types of things are split and accounted for and put in the right place in your financial statements the minute you take the money in. So the money comes in, you post it, it gets distributed to the right thing, then you, um, can give the person a receipt. We even have, some people have a small cash receipt printer instead of printing a receipt on a big printer. Um, so, and then we even have some people's, the town of Springfield goes so far as they have a cash drawer. You know, it actually pops out just like a cash register, so, um, and, and these are all just variations. It's not saying that that's something you have to do. I just wanted to give you the variations. So no matter the pay structure, that, and that's something you guys will have to work out, um, we could make this cash receipt module work, and I would even suggest at that point you just eliminate the separate checking account. There's really no need for it because we can account for it on the, on the financial side as to how much of that money belongs to you to get paid.
Right.
So whatever way you structure it is how we can, the pay structure is how we can make the program work. My recommendation would be if the, the board and, and whoever has to give the approval is to be put on a salary, because then you eliminates all of that, that, you know, are you paying more fees than you've collected, and, and like you said, anybody accusing you of anything, it, it just gets messy. Um, but it is a change to the structure of the way that you get paid.
Great. I will take it in consideration.
Okay.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
I mean, that seemed to be a topic, I guess that was the other topic that took up a lot of time during the forensic audit discussion, right?
Yes, yes.
Remembering that correctly, yeah. And, and what I remember is nothing was found that was nefarious or anything. It's, it was just, it, it needs to be reorganized so that it, and it's more to protect, I mean, it's to protect the town and it's to protect you as well.
Right, I'm good so far.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna mute you then, Julie, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. And I just want to remind, um, everyone that the chat on Zoom is not a public record. Um, we don't use that for communicating, but we are giving everyone a chance to ask Cynthia questions when the board is done with, um, asking what they want to ask, and, you know, uh, so I'll let you go from there.
I mean, I'm pretty, I was gonna say, pretty much done with what I was gonna say, because I would rather answer your questions, um.
Cynthia, can you speak about how you said that one thing that needs, that, that, for instance, doing monthly reconciliations? Do you want to speak about that? That, I found that one to be-
Sure.
As a service that-
So one of the, the, um, biggest areas of weakness that, uh, mostly the smaller towns have is trying to overcome the, the issue of segregation of duties and making sure that the people that are taking in the money, depositing the money, um, signing the checks, and then all the way to reconciliation are not all the same person. It's been difficult, it's been a challenge for towns because there's not enough people to segregate those duties. Um, so that is one of the biggest, um, weaknesses in, in towns. And that is one of the areas that Nemrick has really filled that gap, because you don't want to hire a full-time employee just to have them there to balance the checkbook. Um, so at this point right now, we are, I think we're up to fifteen sites that we do monthly bank reconciliations for people, or for, um, towns, and that's really what we do, is the bank rec for them. Um, a lot of towns have eliminated their, um, locally elected auditors, which has been an area in the past, the auditors have tried to fill that role. It hasn't always, it, most of the time is not successful, and the reasons that that's not successful, um, is because the local auditors are, um, are volunteers most of the time. Maybe you pay them a small amount. Their, their timing of when they can get in there to do it doesn't match the timing of when it needs to be done. And the timeliness of reconciling a bank statement is one of the most important functions in a town. Um, and so, a, and, and the other, the other piece of it is sometimes they're, they've never done that kind of work. They, they weren't, you know, they're an auditor, they've just never done that time of work. So then it takes up a lot of time of the staff that's there to try to show them how to do it. So there are some towns that it's been successful to have a local auditor do it, because that person might be a professional bookkeeper. They're, you know, that town's lucky enough to have that, that skill, that, that volunteer that will do that. So that is an area that we have, um, we have grown. Um, we do it all remotely. We don't do it, um, on-site at this, well, we do everything remotely now, but even before that, we were doing it remotely because it just, I have some towns, it takes forty-five minutes, their accounts, sometimes it takes two hours, sometimes it takes fifteen minutes, depending on the activity and, um, how well they have things organized. Um, it sometimes leads to us finding mistakes, um, interest not posted, maybe a transfer that happened that didn't get posted, something. You know, it's just that other set of eyes for, to segregate that, that from the same person that signs the checks and puts money in the bank. Is that, is that good, Rebecca?
Oh, no, Ellen had something.
So, so Cynthia, here in the town of Pownal, I, I do sign the checks, but we do have a separate person that actually, um, data enters all the accounts payable and payroll and runs the checks.
Mm-hmm.
That was suggested by, by external auditors several years ago. And, and we separated those duties from the treasurer, so that when I, I'm not the one that actually does the check writing. I do sign them.
Yeah.
Um.
I, I hesitate, I, I hesitate to say this because I don't want anybody to think that I am, am saying that this is what would happen, but you have access to those modules, no?
Oh, yes, absolutely, and I, I know what, I know what could happen. I, I still, what people think is you can still write a check, absolutely.
Well, you could write a check.
But it's, right, but it shows up if you actually run it through the, the modules, which is a good thing with Nemrick. I mean, everything shows up sooner or later.
Right, I, I think the biggest problem though, and, and this is, this is a-
But I know what you're saying with the reconciliation.
You could, you could take a check that you, somebody already approved, and you could change it, and you, then you balance the checkbook too. And so it would never get caught, so.
If you know, if you know how to do it, I would assume you probably could very well do that.
Yeah.
I understand, I know, I think it's great.
Yeah, it, it's-
Yeah.
I always try to, I always try to, the person that's like in your position, Ellen.
Mm-hmm.
As much as I am for protecting the town's money, I am, I am almost equally, um, as passionate about protecting the individual that's doing the job, because it's so easy for people to, and you have all of those checks and balances in place, then the, there is just no room for accusation, because nobody likes, yeah, nobody likes to go through that, and, and, and-
Well, I am very protective of the accounts. You can ask anybody here. I don't give out any information. I don't have to. It's not. So, I mean, I get where you're coming from though, Cynthia. I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah. Was there anything else, Rebecca? I know that we've talked on the phone and I just-
Um, yeah, I mean, so we, I don't know if the board has any other questions, and then we could open it up to the public. And if I remember any of the other, I just really wanted you to be able to explain, um, these audit, uh, findings, um, and to bring so, you know, some understanding to all of us about the implications of them, what they really mean, and the solutions. And I think that we've had a great conversation like that, but I, if, if the board has anything else, and then we can just open it to the public, is that good with you guys, or? Do you have some questions, Bob?
I do, I'd love to add a couple of questions.
This is Bob Jarvis. Hi, Bob.
Hi, Cynthia. Thanks a lot for coming. Uh, really appreciate you, uh, joining. Um, so if I understood it correctly, the cash receipts module is the only module of Nemrick that we don't currently own, uh, that we don't currently use. Uh, and I assume we don't own it. We didn't buy it from Nemrick. Okay, so, and so there is some, uh, so there is some, uh, some expense associated with getting it, but there's a lot of benefit from it, because, uh, I think we through this in multiple audits, um, that we need to be able to. Uh, um, you did say, you did say that that was a single point of entry. Did you, were you referring to the cash receipts module and multiple terminals attached to it, or is it literally one terminal?
No, it's, it's a really good question. So you can have the cash receipts module on the system, and you can have multiple terminals have access to it? And then you can have it per, you can, so it runs as a, um, until you cash up is what I like to call it. You, you have a deposit number that's associated with that cash up, can have that deposit number associated with a password. So Ellen could have a password that she has her own set of deposit numbers. Um, someone else could have a, have a set of deposit numbers. That way that the money that that individual takes in for whatever it is, is only their cash register, let's say, but it can be at multiple terminals.
Okay, and then in the Nemrick system itself, and I'm completely ignorant of the Nemrick system, other than I used to get a, an export of the budget. Um, uh, but, um, I'm assuming that because they have separate logins, that any transaction that goes through there has a full audit trail. Isn't that correct?
Yes, yes. Um, as a matter of fact, just, just so that, just, I'm not gonna say what town it was or anything, but that is how we found. It was in the cash receipts module that we found some problems in, in a town, and transactions were being voided, but they didn't realize that in the actual data file, we kept that void in there.
Okay, so, and so the, and so the-
So it's just like a regular cash register. Anything that goes through there as cash, a void, a receipt, anything can be shown up, correct?
And, and that's the cash receipts module, but Nemrick altogether would have a, an audit-
I was gonna say, altogether are-
Right, it's all linked.
Yeah, it's all linked, and all of our programs are like that. We actually get complaints from people that it's really hard to change some things, and we purposely do that because we want the audit trail of anything that gets changed.
Okay, and, and just a couple more audit trail questions. Is the, uh, it, does the audit trail actually make a, a separate entry every time there's a change, so you can see that, um, such and such a date, this was changed from a hundred thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Then three days later, somebody changed it from a hundred and fifty thousand to, you know, ninety-eight thousand? So every single one of those gets audited and, and logged in the audit trail. It's not, it's not-
Yeah, we've even, we've even had it where people try to, try to trick the date, but we can sort it by, we, we can, if we open the raw data file, it's the entry order. So no matter what date they put it in, we can see when it happened.
Right, and, and hosted, uh, so there's no, there's no software installation here, right? It's all hosted software.
No, the, well, the, are you guys-
On our, our drive.
It's on your network.
Oh, it is on our network, so the, the software itself, so it's a local install. It's not a cloud, it's not a cloud or SaaS offering.
We do have a cloud version, we do have a cloud, um, but you guys are not on it.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's the end of my question.
Did Jamie, so this is Jamie. Hi, Jamie.
The other, the other thing, if I understand this correctly, is as you're entering the cash receipt or any, any, uh, areas, there's associated, the number attached to that when it's entered into there for the accounting purposes, and then that'll distribute to the internal lines all the way back to the general ledger.
Correct.
Well, I mean, that, that's the biggest thing, is it's the ease, you're not having to go from cash receipts to tax administration, then to the, it automatically will do all that.
Well, I mean, it's a-
You've got set lines in there.
Yeah, I mean, it's a button to transfer from one to the other, so, so, so in cash receipts, the cash up process is transfer to utilities, transfer to taxes, transfer to general ledger. So there's this transfer process, but once you get it down, it's like one, it's, it's a quick process.
Cynthia?
Yeah.
It's Ellen. So, so for, to, to clarify, so when we data enter, when we, we cashed out or cash up, or however you want to use the verbiage, that's our deposit, so then that deposit comes to the treasurer to deposit. So it goes from the cash receipts to the treasurer. The treasurer verifies the cash receipts, and all they have to do is bring it to the bank, because once they push the button, everything goes from that deposit, correct?
Yep.
Because that's what the, it's, it's just like entering like into the tax administration, except for it would go into the tax, into cash receipts, correct?
Yeah, it would go cash receipts. You would have to transfer to taxes to get it to-
Right, 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 right. I understand the transfer part.
Yeah.
Just, just clarifying for my own, for everybody else's.
I want to give you an example of a place that has a ton of transactions that goes through their office on a daily basis. So much so they have to cash up on a daily basis, is, um, the town of Rockingham. And I worked up there for a little while, and they have a filing system that every day they have those reports. The bank, the bank deposit slip is attached to it, and all of the backup to that day is in that one. And if I, when I reconciled the bank statement there, if there was something that didn't match the deposit that came from cash receipts, I walked over to the filing cabinet, I put, I had everything in front of me. It was, it was one, it's one of the best systems, um, cash receipt systems setups that I've seen, seen.
That's great. Yeah, because I keep all my backups and everything too, and I do go to the bank often. I found out down here in Pownal that if we hold, it's hard for people to reconcile their, their accounts. And if I go to the bank two or three times a week with whatever deposits are given to me,
Mm-hmm.
I have very, very, very few insufficient fund checks. But if we hold, it'll be a lot of time we're allowed to hold them before we hand them over, or they go to the bank, then we have issues.
Yep.
The, it, it helps the, the citizens and, and us to, and, and that's how we work in here.
Yep.
Thanks, Cynthia. So right now, we're not connected with the tax administration. Is that something that she recommends?
Yes, we're gonna link everything.
We're gonna link everything, okay.
If you guys get the cash receipts, all this is gonna be automatically.
Yes, to the general ledger.
To the general ledger.
And so then every, literally every penny has an in and out, where it went, who handled it. It's like fully recorded. That's all the verification's done.
And the tax administration link, Ellen, we can probably do, just as a support call.
That's, okay.
Because it's not, I, I mean, you're-
What's the difference? It saves me a, a entry.
Yeah, it, yeah, I mean, your two, utilities is already connected, so, you know, there wasn't some other reason, so you're doing it there. But that's just basically just making sure we know what account numbers for it to hit, and just hitting the link button and, and getting it going.
Okay, okay.
So that, that you and I can work on at any point without any of, you know?
Okay, I will, I will clarify with that, that with the board, but I'm sure they won't have a problem.
Okay.
And I will work on that, probably the beginning of next week.
Okay.
Whenever, whenever's good for you, Cynthia, Cynthia.
Maybe we should wait until like first of February and get-
Oh, yeah, just start at the beginning of the month.
Yeah.
Sounds good. I will do that. Thanks.
Do you have any other questions?
Um, I did, but I, I'll, I'll.
Um, do you want to open to public comments and questions?
Is anybody done? Mike, did you have any questions?
No, I'm good. I understood it all perfectly.
No, I'm good. I understood it all perfectly. So we're good.
Are you gonna be my timekeeper?
Yeah.
I got it.
Three minutes, three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay.
So we're gonna open this up to public comment.
I'm gonna do, Jim was up first, so.
Three minutes, please, please take your name.
Um, he's just unmuting.
Raise your hand if you have a question.
Go ahead Jim.
Hello, hello, hello everyone. Um, long time no talk to you guys. First of all, I wanna just thank you very much, first of all, to Rebecca for um, number one, explaining the um, two thousand nineteen audit. Um, it's, it's been something that I can see has been a long time waiting for. Um, I hope that um, everyone will take a chance to kinda just look at the audit compared to the annual report. Um, I know that Ellen has been doing the best she can um, with everything. And this is a perfect test to find out if the annual report of the two thousand and nineteen matches to the audit of the two thousand and nineteen. Um, I think that we're in, we, we will be in good shape. Um, if there are numbers that are not correct um, or there's big differences, then it would be something that the town would have to worry about. But um, I don't think there are gonna be any big numbers that I'm gonna see different there. And I think that um, it's gonna come in very close. The second thing is um, this is a long time coming, I think. I, I, first of all, I wanna tell Cynthia that her explanation of this whole process has been unbelievable. Um, it's, it's, it's time that it's, or it's nice to have someone come into a town and kind of talk to the people. And not have an outside auditor come in and explain things that are way over everyone's head. Um, it's, it's kind of a similar situation when you're reading outside auditor's report. The outside auditor's report is something you can't understand. What our auditors, our internal auditors have tried to always do in the years past, have always to take that information and put it in a format that is gonna be helpful for the people to understand. And I'm sure Cynthia understands that, is that there is a difference between the lower level of um, town trying to understand everything and the higher requirements of an audit that's going on. I understand the program. This is a program that is long, long, long needed in town. When I was back treasurer in two thousand nine, or um, nineteen ninety, I did everything by hand. And I sit now in this day and age, wondering how did that ever happen? That everything could be under control by doing a general ledger by hand. So this is more than welcoming to hear that um, we could be moving forward into the twenty-second century. I mean, it's, it's just unbelievable that we have been missed out in a lot of stuff. So I just wanna thank you very much. How many seconds?
Thirty seconds, twenty-five more.
No, I think I've said enough. I, I, I look forward to this. Um, and I just wanna make sure everyone understands that. Yes, our auditors, internal auditors have tried the best to do what they can do to just make sure everything has been run properly. But I enjoy hearing Cynthia with what she's presenting to the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you Jim.
Thanks Jim. All right, I'm gonna unmute Jenny, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to just, you, you talked about compliance Rebecca. I wanna just say that no one said that the town was out of compliance ever with getting um, yearly audit, audits. We've always had a yearly audit by an outside firm. Um, no one has suggested otherwise. And it's not likely that anyone would ever want to eliminate that. Um, it's not about the statute. It's about being told by the chair of the board prior to the vote last year that the books would be audited every other week. Uh, the town vote uh, voted based on that information. And our auditors did in fact have the education needed to do so. So I just wanna stand up for them because that was, I'm not okay with how that went down. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Anybody else please may hear me?
Um, and um, iPhone, I believe this is Marlena Pellon.
Please say your name.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Hello, please say your name.
Okay, Marlena. Um, hi, thank you very much Cynthia. It's wonderful that you were able to um, speak to these items. Uh, I'd like to thank Tom Lankowski and Crystal Gardner, who are our certified um, bookkeepers and CFO, who were our internal auditors last year, who actually brought the same information to the board last year of the services you offered based on a training that they attended. So I'm glad to see that you were finally able to get down here. I have a couple of questions. Um, the first one is, does the software that you're talking about help itemize out fees, penalties and items that, you know, may, may uh, be incurred when bills are paid late or when there's penalties incurred? Because uh, we tend to underestimate our workers' compensation payments. And we get hit with a penalty annually for doing that. And it's, it's not tracked or easily visible or transparent to the taxpayers to see what those types of items end up adding up to um, for the town. Another question I have is the internal auditors last year brought to the town's attention um, copies of errors made during payroll. Um, paychecks, I'm sorry, uh, time cards that were, hours were undercounted on or time cards where overtime was accrued but not paid. And we toyed with the idea of utilizing a system called paychecks, which interfaces with NEMRIC. And I'm wondering if you could speak to the benefit of having a time and attendance system that interfaces with the NEMRIC system and how that could potentially save costs for the town. I believe our accounts payable payroll person indicated it takes her three to four hours per week just to process payroll. And the paychecks individual said it takes thirty minutes to process payroll when you use paychecks. Um, I just wanna touch base real quick on the adjusting journal entries that were mentioned earlier. Uh, just to clarify that the discussion regarding non-authorized changes wasn't that things were being done wrong. It was indicated that the accounts payable individual would get interrupted and might potentially select the wrong account number. Warrants would then be signed and then the next day, the adjustments were made. And that was what the forensic auditor brought to the attention of the board was why are these things changing after the warrants are signed? Why are they not being discussed as to why those things are being done? So would the NEMRIC system be able to provide an itemization of those types of changes in a report format? According to Jeff Graham, it does. It would just be nice if those types of things were presented to the public so we can have a better idea as to how our tax dollars are being utilized. Thank you Cynthia. I look forward to hearing your responses.
Okay, I hope I can remember the, all the questions. Did somebody write them down? Um, so let me just start with, I'll go backwards. The journal entries, I, I think that um, uh, the system will print a report of all journal entries entered into the system in a, in an organized format. The um, it will allow the person that is entering the journal entry to make as many notes as they want and include the memos on it. I think that the, the, I don't wanna say the fix. I think that the um, the solution to the finding is to come up with a system where the journal entries don't get entered. Or there's a discussion of that they get entered and approved, you know, uh, weekly or whatever it is, whatever people agree upon by someone who is knowledgeable in that process. The one thing that you did mention that you said happens is account numbers might be being entered incorrectly, you know, just by punching it in wrong, just a typo error because you're being interrupted. Um, there are some ways to catch in the accounts payable system from that happening. If you have, um, if you have invoices that are paid to similar vendors every month. And I'll give you an example, the phone bill, the Green Mountain Power bill, or whoever your power company is. Um, if they're the same account numbers every month, um, you can set up default account numbers so that you don't even have to enter the number. So there are some things that we can, we can try to have the system catch as much of that as possible. And it all starts with setup. First, it starts with what is the problem? And is there a solution in the software to do it? So some of those things that you mentioned, the other thing with our journal entry process, there is, there are some towns that utilize our process where the journal entry has to be approved before it will post in the system. Um, you can, you can enter the journal entry as unapproved and somebody else can go in and approve it. So that's a process that's in the system. So I think it's really talking about what is the problem, what is the solution? And who are the key people that are going to help utilize that process?
Hold on Bob, that's our question?
Uh, yeah, not, not actually a question, but I wanna make a, a statement about this. Um, uh, the reason towns enter into forensic audit is different than the reason towns have a annual audit. The annual audit is to audit your books, find whether or not you're following the process and, and a lot of other. You enter into a forensic audit where you believe there are illegal, that there is illegal activity. And that's what the board was convinced of last year when we entered into a, into a forensic audit. The forensic auditor and uh, and uh, the forensic auditor did state that there was no illegal activity found. That was sixty thousand dollars worth of expenditure. But I, I'm sort of countering the, a previous statement that said there was never an accusation of illegal activity or anything nefarious. That's not true. That's what we were convinced of when we went into a forensic audit. So the things that the forensic auditor found are the same things that our annual audit.
Do you, so I see.
There's still more questions that I'm waiting for a response on. So one of them Cynthia was whether or not um.
Go ahead Cynthia. Okay, so the other question that I, that I remember was talking about payroll and, and um, processing payroll and the length of time that it takes. And there was a mention of the paychecks. I personally am not familiar with paychecks and the interface with NEMRIC. I am familiar with some other companies that um, have been in contract with some towns where um, employees are entering their hours at a location. It might even be remote. And then it goes into the system. And then the posting file that happens in NEMRIC in order to process the payroll is imported from that system. Um, uh, any type of system that you can automate, um, I, I think is, is okay. I don't, I haven't looked through the payroll time sheets and I haven't looked through um, what that process is like for them in, in processing. There may be things that they're doing in processing payroll right now that is taking them longer than it should that we can help with. We have, we have a, an automatic posting system where everybody on salary gets posted automatically. We have a semi-automatic, so you don't have to type in each individual's name. So there might be other places in the payroll to tighten up and, and um, make that, that processing part go s- more smoothly and faster. Um, but it really, I'm gonna go back to what I said in the beginning. It really starts with that source document. And if you have a good system in place for capturing the time at the time that the person is working and somebody is double checking that and making sure that the hours that are on it are correct and added up correctly and signing off on it, that person is then responsible for the fact that whether they make the mistake or not. And then the second set of eyes sits on it when they're entering it. So I think, I think that question really starts back at that source document again and that approval process. And how that gets done. I don't even, how many, I don't even know how many people are on your payroll right now. Uh, Rebecca, do you know?
Interruptions make payroll longer.
Well, do you, do you, but how many people do you have on payroll? She just asked.
Um, on, on a weekly basis, it can be up to twenty or so checks, depends on what's going on that week.
And, and do you pay weekly, you said?
Yeah. It really comes down to the number of interruption one receives while that person is actually performing the payroll function.
Yep.
We, we have a one-room town hall. So interruptions are, are king here, honestly.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, like I said, I think that there's, uh, what happens when I start working with towns is we start to find those little things that, that over the years and using software, you start to get into a pattern of how to use it. And new, we get feedback continually from our clients and we tighten our software and we, we make it so that it is more user friendly. And we make it so that some of these things that people run into um, can be, can be made faster and more accurate. And, but the people that have been using it for ten or twelve years might not know we've done that change. So we start to build that, okay, I know where we can tighten this. This is some stuff we can do.
This is, this is building capacity. This is building capacity, which is exactly what we're talking about on many levels. Okay.
Uh, I think there was one more question, but I can't remember it. I'm sorry.
All right, well, let's, she can unmute. Go ahead. Um, and she can remind us of the third question. Go ahead Marlena.
Yes, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oops, sorry about that. Um, yes, so the question was, um, we get fines and penalties for underestimating workers' compensation. It's a guesstimation. So does the system assist with that based on either historical trending and or forecasting or anything like that? Because it's money we don't uh, forecast for. But you get hit with it when you get your audit. And regarding, you know, late payment fines, penalties for paying bills late or uh, subscribing to something late, you know, what, whatever it might be.
Yeah, I.
Does it track that information so that we can see how our?
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. Wait, I'm sorry. I accidentally hit mute Marlena. I'm sorry. Hold on. Finish. I'm sorry.
Where did I end?
I, I, I got, I remember the.
Got the gist of it? Okay.
I got the gist of it.
I, I apologize for that. Here, um, also Ellen would like to speak to that.
Right, so workman's comp is actually based on your payroll, annual payroll. And if you don't budget in your budget for raises and et cetera, and comp reviews your, your payroll, um, and you don't do a um.
Could you have her just speak up please? We can't hear her.
Well, you're, you're pulling your mask down.
When you're speaking, yes.
So, so when, so comp is based on payroll. So when you do your payroll, if, if we're not fined, we have to pay the difference of what we owe. If we didn't budget properly and you guys, and, and the board gives a raise or we add a new position to payroll and the pay, now your payroll's gone up another twenty thousand. And work, workman's comp doesn't know this when they did your, um, cause, because they come and check you annually. And they do their own personal audit. And that's why sometimes we owe them money. Because comp is based on payroll. So if all the payroll is not budgeted, then they can't make the proper billing to begin with. And we end up paying in the end. It's not a fine. Or we could receive money. And, and in, in previous years, we've received money back. But because the board over the past handful of years has changed its way of doing some of their payroll information, we have had to pay two separate payments. The first payment where they bill us and then the second payment after their audit. It's not a fine.
Right, and it goes, it's, it's based off of claims too. If you have three years.
And then if you have several claims.
Yeah, so, so to answer the question about the software though, no, there, the software is not going to know if there's a fi- a fine or an extra amount you have to pay with somebody. If you input a bill and part of that bill is a late penalty for paying something late, like a late fee, you, you have to enter that as a separate late fee if you want to track it as a separate item for transparency of how often that happens. So, but the software is not gonna do any trends or any of that. So to answer your question about the software, that's not gonna.
Can I speak again?
It would make your AP, listen, it would make your AP more expensive to do.
Right, it would be too hard to track. But again, the, the couple bills that are being referred to that were being paid late was because the bills weren't arriving, because we were having mail issues, which we still are, but that bill has been straightened out.
And, and are you done there with that one?
Okay, there are others that have their hands raised. I'm going to call on um, Margaret. I believe you were next. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Um, I just wonder if at some point somebody can summarize which of Cynthia's recommendations we're going to be taking action on versus which require further discussion and approval. So whether we are going to um, get the cash receipts module. So when, um, when the linking. whether we are going to, um, get the cash receipts module. So when, um, when the linking will happen between the tax admin ledger, um, whether NIMRIC will do monthly reconciliations, whether we'll put the town clerk on a salary and shut down that other checking account, whether Cynthia will come in with her colleagues to help us figure out other little areas where we could tighten or make sure that we're kind of, um, you know, squaring up with best practice. So if someone could kind of like outline for us point by point, what's happening and, and what's uh, going to require further discussion.
Yeah. So I can speak to that. Um, this is Rebecca. Um, so this is, I'm sorry, that was Margaret Cody, Margaret Cody for the record. Um, yeah. So Margaret, um, Cynthia and I have been working together and she is, um, going to, based on what our needs are in further conversations, draft, um, some suggested possible contracts for consulting and with this kind of work. And then all of that would be brought back here to the select board for them to discuss. The co, it would be made public. It would be a matter of discussion for anyone, for you to call back in and talk about. Regarding putting on the town clerk on salary, that is a ballot article. Um, the board voted on Tuesday night to put it on the ballot. It is something that needs to be voter approved. Um, and let's see, what else? I believe, did that answer all of that, Margaret?
Yeah, that sounds great. I'm excited to see the recommendation come back. This all sounds like terrific progress. Thanks, everyone involved.
Thanks, Margaret. Oh, sorry. Yeah, that would be. I didn't hear what he said. Do I need to know something?
Uh, no, no, no. I, there was, there was no question. It was just, uh, I was just stating that some of those things the board needs to vote on to decide what we're going to move forward with it. But I, I know that, uh, from the nods in the room, I think we're all on board with things like the cash receipts.
We still have further things to talk about once we've reached out a contract, right Cynthia? So let me, let me just make a suggestion. Okay? So tax administration link, I think Ellen and I have already decided that we're going to do that sometime late January, February. That is going to be something that her and I will just handle as a regular support call. That's just, that's not anything you need to, you already pay an annual support agreement.
Right.
That's part of that. Um, so that answers one of them. The other one that seems like you guys are really, um, excited about, and I, I believe it's the right next step to get you the all encompassing process is the cash receipts module. So I can, I can, I'll put it in writing to Rebecca, but that, that module is, um, $1,795 or something like that. Um, yeah. And then there is some training and, and other stuff that goes with it. That's what I'll put in a, um, in a recommendation or a, a estimate to Rebecca for her to present to the board to, to vote on whether they want it or not. Um, so those two things we can just kind of hop on. You can put it on your next agenda. And then Ellen and I can work out a time to get it set up and start the training and all of that. Um, then from that point, it's, it's really me doing a little bit of research with Ellen and, and, um, the clerk and, and some other people to just kind of give you an idea of what the estimate number of hours would be for kind of the rest of the stuff that we talked about. Because the, the, the cash receipts and the linking of that, of that, um, tax administration are going to handle a lot of the journal entries that are being done. And, and then we can talk about how we come up with, you know, what is the timeframe of coming up with procedures and that kind of thing? So there's kind of a few separate little things that we're working on all at the same time. Does that make sense?
It does. I just wanted to make it clear that that's only a one-time fee, correct?
For the purchase of the software, yes. The, the 1,700, yeah. And then it'll fall under the annual support contract. No increase in the annual support contract, just for buying that software. Um, so any updates that are available, any enhancements we make to it, that all comes with your annual support contract. So really what you're saying is that the additional cost will be on the front end with some training because of the new system. And then also with the ongoing consulting, which is a per hour fee, which will be monthly, for instance, monthly reconciliations and approval of journal entries, things like that, filling in our gaps. Right. And that will be through a separate contract, which probably we call it a bulk time agreement because if you do a bulk time agreement, you get a discounted rate.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to, um, unmute, um, Tom Lankowski. He's been waiting. Go ahead, Tom. You want to unmute yourself?
Thank you. You just, just woke me up. Um,
Oh.
No, no, just kidding. Um, Cynthia, I've real, I've really enjoyed what you've had to say tonight. Um, and in your last comment, you said the rest of the stuff. Now, you, you sell software and, and the town of Pownell needs that software to bring all the systems together. But there's a whole group of procedures, policies a, and such that need to be in place to make that software work. And what you're saying is you can also sell us, um, a service that would implement those procedures that would audit them going forward and make sure that what goes into your system is appropriate. Is, is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, you're, you're, you're going to kind of be like the internal auditors or, uh, a group that will keep us, um, honest, if you will, and make sure that what we implement, what we put into a payroll system or we put into accounts payable system actually is what it should be put in and what works.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So my goal when I'm working with a town a, and, and it always comes down to unfortunately, how much money a, a town can
Right.
spend on a service like this. But my goal is to always, first of all, my number one goal and, and people might, i- unless they want us on forever, is really work myself out of a job to get it to the point where the town has the capacity to make sure you fulfill all of these things that we're talking about.
Right.
So i- if, if we get to a point where you find somebody that's within your, your organization that can help you segregate the duties or the, or fill in the gaps that you're lacking, it's not going to hurt our feelings that we don't have to be there anymore. We're, we're there to help fill the gaps or be there as long as you want us. So, so that's the goal. And then the other goal is to, I want June 30th, June, you guys are, I shouldn't, I should know this, but you guys are a fiscal year, right? June 30th.
Yeah.
I want that day to be just like any other day. And I want the board by the end of July to be able to say, this is what our balances are in our accounts.
And I don't, I don't think that's been a problem in the past, but really what you're saying is the town has to look at what you offer as your contract and services versus say, internal auditors.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not telling you, I'm not making it, I'm not making a recommendation on whether you should have internal auditors or not.
I know that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true. But you're, you're one option. Your company, your firm is one option.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to go back quickly to the beginning. I personally am, am a little bit disheartened by the fact that we haven't had reports on the 2019, 20 and the forensic audit reported to us, reported to you as a board, a select board from the, and maybe you have from the, the auditors themselves. In my world, uh, where I've lived in the past and my experience, the auditors always come in and present their findings. Uh, Rebecca, I know you've done your best to try to interpret those and present those to us. But there's some connection when you have, uh, the people that are doing the work come in and then say, here's what we found. A, a, and again, I'm, I'm not saying anything's wrong. I'm just saying it's nice to have that communication with the people that did the work. So that's just a point I wanted to make. And uh, I, I hope we look at that in the future because to talk to those people is very important, I think, as a part of, of management and learning what's, what, what we need to learn about what's going on with our town finances. Um, one part I heard during the conversation, what?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Thank you. Um, is, is someone said, we don't have the resources to do the work. I hope we give whoever it is, the resources they need to do the work. Um, and just clarifying, the external, we've had external orders for quite a few years. We've had internal auditors. The internal auditors have worked on weekly and monthly numbers. And the external auditors, once a year, come in and audit that information. So that's the way it's worked in the past. It's not to say that should be the future, but, uh, thank you. Guys, you did a good job. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom. Go ahead, Ellen.
So Bonadillo, I am sure will present the FY19 audit if we need them to, if we need them to. That was part of the contract.
Yeah.
Um, but they're going right into our FY20 audit so that we can move on. Um, and we need these audits done.
The delay has been.
So, so it's not that we, that nobody wants them to come in here and speak with COVID. I'm, I'm sure, I don't know if they'll zoom or not. It's something that the board will have to ask them. Um, because of, because of the forensic audit, the, um, Bonadillo could not speak on the FY19 audit at all until it was finalized. So they couldn't give us updates. They couldn't give us anything until they answered all the questions.
Just to be clear, what was the date we actually received the final report?
The final, the final audit was two days ago, two nights ago.
So, so it just to make sure everybody understands, two days ago is when we had the final audit. So.
And I just came right with it. Right. Um,
And the, the external auditors put their hands on more records than the internal audit, auditors do.
Absolutely.
Um, and also I think that's one thing that we did talk about, just for clarification Cynthia, is that some of the thing, well, many of the things that you're offering that NIMRIC can do, um, statutorily cannot be performed by elected auditors, correct? Like they cannot, um, by statute, they cannot perform approvals or, um, things like that. Um, is that correct? We had talked about that today. Well, I don't know, I don't know if I said that statutorily, but I don't know that, um, Well, they can't affect the books. Yeah, no, because then they're auditing their work. So. So, so even with internal auditors, we're still talking about lacks of, lacks in capacity and system weaknesses that need to be filled. It's not, it's not NIMRIC or the internal auditors. Oh, yeah, I guess you're right. Yeah. I, I see what you're saying. But yeah, there are certain, there are certain things that you can't have an auditor do if they're then auditing that. That's why your external auditors sometimes get a little squirrely about giving you information beca, or trying to help you. Because then they're, they're, they're auditing their own work. So, um, I mean, I think the ba, one of the main things we talked about today Rebecca was time cards, like signing off on, you know, the whole time. The time card thing. Yeah, they don't. Now auditors can't sign off on time cards because they don't know, how do they know? It, you know, how, how many hours or they haven't seen the output of their work. Um, so really, uh, but I think that you said, that seems like a very simple answer. I already have a solution in mind for that. That's just internal. Um, very simple and I'll present that at the next meeting. Yeah. Um, there's, there's, uh, well, there's hands up again, but there are people who've already spoken. So it's your choice what you'd like to do. It's, it's almost. So. Okay, so. Okay. And if people want to send questions to me, I will send them to Cynthia and I'll make sure they get answered. I will, so that the way this conversation doesn't end right this moment, that we'll continue to get that information out to people. Okay? Thank you, Cynthia. Thank you. I, it was nice meeting everybody and I hope that we can help you out. Uh, we really just want to help you out. And whatever we can do to do that, just let us know. I will send you a um, estimate for the cash receipts module. So you guys can talk about that at your next meeting. Thank you. And we'll chat next week, you and I, okay? Okay. All right. Everybody have a good night. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, moving on to parks and recreation update.
Yeah, I'm, I'll bang through the, I'll bang through my rest of my updates. So Parks and Rec, uh, committee update. Um, we received a Spark grant for $1,500 for the purpose of building an ice rink. The committee decided that instead of buying a complete kit, instead we could just purchase liners and use locals to help build. Um, therefore we're actually able to build two ice skating rinks, a big one and a kiddie pool version for, so the littles don't get run over. Um, so many people have donated their time and energy to this. Both fire departments helped to fill the rinks. Passersby even stopped, just didn't even know what was happening, stopped by. One of them gave a check to Ellen for a hundred bucks, said, I want to help with that. Um, another person went out and bought us $200 worth of supplies to help shore things up and just said, here, I want to give this to you. We've received so much enthusiasm. It's been really great. Residents have built benches, Angie and her husband, um, a marshmallow roaster, and there is plans to build fire pits. Um, we have offers of free firewood, used skates. There's just a lot going on there. Okay. Next, the committee has set a priority of development of Center Street Park and the Pownell Town Green. And that was with your approval at the last meeting. We've been working on an overall vision that includes the proposed town hall project and also a diversity of recreational resources that aim to serve all demographics in town, the babies, the families, the seniors, everyone. This vision includes skateboard and scooter ramps, a pavilion, pump track, seating and community garden plots. Um, incorporated into this vision is use of the schoolhouse portion of the new town hall as a community meeting space where classes and gatherings and art installations and things like that can happen. I plan to apply for a program that would facilitate development of this vision. And I will discuss that in my grant update section. So in Parks and Rec, we divided up aspects of this vision among the committee members so they could research resources and funding for them. So that, uh, the categories are playground slash splash pad. I feel like splash pad is really pie in the sky for us here. They're very expensive, but we're going to look. Um, skateboard and scooter ramps, um, we'll talk about that in a second. Uh, pump track and then non-play resources such as the pavilion, um, seating, uh, community gardens. Um, um, I do want to talk about Linda and Ellen can speak to this. They have identified a line. It's $4,200. Um, that was slated for recreation. It was received through a grant many, many years ago. Um, and it was suggested that perhaps if Parks and Rec could, um, I'm asking potentially if Parks and Rec could use it for the building of the skate and scooter ramps. Um, I was going to go for a better places grant for building those. But if we have funding, we can build some very nice ramps for that amount. I'm working with someone who knows about building skate ramps. And then I would, you go after the better places grant for building of a pavilion and seating. Um, so I don't know if you guys can talk about that line.
I didn't get to that today, but I will do that first day in the morning. My, we had a lot of.
Just so you know, we cannot hear.
Oh, come on over. She, she's coming over. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jim. So the implementation in rec money, a lot of that was donations way back when they started doing the Strobridge park and everything down on the tannery land. Um, there were several donations. There was a grant, the grant, I think we used up. That was, it was so long ago. I'm going to do some printouts and, um, and, uh, we can follow that because but there's $4,200. The, the committee kind of dispersed and stopped.
And so it's just a line item that's been sitting there for the purposes of recreation.
It's a, it's a separate bank account. It, it falls under our special revenues, um, in the 500 accounts. Um, we don't budget in it. It's just been there. It's been there for a while. Every once in a while, I think, um, someone will come and, and ask to be reimbursed for like a flag, a, a new flag down at the park.
Oh, and that it'll come.
And it comes from that line. Besides that, it has no activity. It just sits there.
So, so what I was suggesting was that, um, I mean, I would not ask for you to just give Parks and Rec that money. What we would do is develop a budget, which shows everything, the designs of what we plan to build and the amounts. Um, but it fits right into recreation, which is what those, that, that is for. Um, I know that skateboard and scooter ramps would be incredibly popular. It would bring a lot of activity down to that park. It's all ages. Um, it's a great start to bringing more activity down there. So that's that. But I'm not asking for action on that. I just, we're going to create a, if you're okay with that, I'm going to create a budget and present it to you and ask for action on that in another time. So, um, Jen, who is our new Pownell librarian, I've been talking to her. Um, she reached out to me. She's, um, she's gonna work collaboratively with the Parks and Rec Committee on some ideas. And next week I'm meeting with her. We're gonna work on a grant application that's for libraries for permanent installations. Um, for, that are sponsored by libraries. So she really wants to do it at the Center Street Park. She's very invested in coming on with Parks and Rec and helping with that. And we're thinking about perhaps going after a grant for permanent cement chess table, um, or one of those little libraries or both. You know, uh, it would be a great thing to see down there. Um, and then regarding the Center Street Community Church, um, I also think it's really important that the church is included in and considered in our vision for town green development. We do own that building. Um, however, this crosses into our grant discussion. So if you guys have anything you want to ask me about Parks and Rec before I move on to grants, you know, we're just trying to plow through. Everyone's good. I'm sorry.
Rebecca? Nobody can hear anybody but you. I mean, I can't hear anybody.
Okay, uh, what I was saying is as we, as we look at those things and as we think about these expenditures, uh, we really need to think about, uh, uh, the kind of things that are one and done versus things that are, are, uh, create a perpetual budget for it, right?
That, well, that would be all written into the budget and it would have a vision. It would have a maintenance plan. I mean, all of that would be considered.
Right. And I, and I'm gonna be leaning more towards the one and done type of things that.
Well, like skateboard and scooter ramps.
Right. But I'm, I'm just making the general comment.
Right.
That, right. Um, uh, just, just to ask that the, uh, that the, that, that is considered as you're making the proposal.
Sure. Absolutely. Okay. Um, all right. So grant updates. We received over twenty-six thousand dollars from the Elder Grant for laptops, cell phones and printers to help town staff work from home due to lowered capacity at the town hall. We also received, here, I shall turn the camera, an enorm, behind Ronnie, an enormous video conferencing system. But because mail and deliveries are what it is, it is still, um, we're still waiting for a couple of pieces. As soon as the pieces come, um, I'm going to receive training on it. And it is for the purpose of being able to have meetings where I don't have to pass a laptop around. There can be one, two of us here, you know, so we can continue to have meetings and have really good video conferencing, uh, good quality uh, sound and visuals. And it will move very nicely into that old schoolhouse. I mean, we can have movie nights on that thing. It's huge. Um, so we also received approximately twenty-two thousand dollars for digitization of land records. Um, I know I've talked about these grants a lot, but we've actually received the money on them now. So all of that's been paid back pretty close to fifty thousand dollars in grant funding that's come to the town in the last, um, month. Um, and so Julie's records are digitized now as well as the listers. I mean, not all of Julie's, but many are. So, uh, people can access them through a portal. Um, regarding the historical preservation grant that we applied for, for Center Street Community Church, we were not awarded this grant. And I spoke with Caitlin Cor- Corkins, who manages this grant program to get feedback on the application. And so she said that the application was really good generally, but there were a couple weaknesses and I want to share them with you. So one is that painting isn't often a high scorer in terms of historical rehabilitation work. So I recommended to the church to try and find alternative funding, such as just per church fundraising to paint it. Um, she felt that the roof work would have been a perfect fit for the program. But because it was for the purpose of eventual, because it was for the purpose of eventually restoring the bell tower. However, we have no pictures of the top of the roof, so we should consider having someone who knows how to go up on top of a roof, take some pictures up there for our files for future opportunities. So the main reason we were not awarded this grant is because the space does not have community use, does not have enough community use. So they didn't really see the value in granting funding towards a building that is only used by a few people just once a week. And because of this, we need to start really talking about the town's relationship with the church, our legal relationship with the church, I believe. The church in no way has the resources to preserve or maintain that building. Um, if the town sees value in the church as an asset for our town center, we need to define our legal relationship with the church and collaborate with them to create those community opportunities. So if we don't come up with a plan regarding that, I really believe that this church is gonna continue to fall into disrepair and, um, that, that asset's gonna be lost to Pownell. Um, if we're able to accomplish this, a better collaboration with the church group, this would help us qualify for programs for funding to improve the space, including adding a restroom, wheelchair ramp, efficient heating, repairing the roof, putting the bell tower, um, and an agreement with the church will also allow it, um, us to include it in our town green vision, which will bring more programming and resources to our town center. So last night I spoke with Cliff Dayton. He's also the one who's been designing scooter and skate ramps for us. Um, but he's on the board of the church and we started a conversation about this collaboration between church, the church council and I, in Parks and Rec for town green development. Um, and I suggest scheduling, having them on the agenda in February or even after the election. So we can have a public discussion about that relationship. And before then, I'm gonna do a whole ton of lead, legwork, talking to them, talking to Parks and Rec, coming up with ideas. So I, I'll just blam, present you with a whole bunch of ideas and thoughts and we, you know, we'll have a good discussion then. So the last thing is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Program. Um, I spoke at length with Jonathan at the BRCRC regarding this. This is a program that brings statewide private and public sector resources to a town to help them develop a vision and plan for an area, particular project or area. So I'm going to apply to this program for the town green vision that I'm talking about. So this would include the town hall with the community meeting space, the church, Center Street Park. And the purpose of this program is to build capacity, which is what we keep saying again and again and again in Pownell, that we need to build capacity. We're not a big town. We're a little town. We need to do little tiny things to build that capacity that helps us qualify two, three, four years for these bigger programs. Um, the purpose, uh, so Jonathan and I are gonna meet next week and he's gonna help me with materials. And he's really stoked about this idea for the town green. Questions there on grants? Yep, Jamie, pop loud.
One question is the concept, the picture concept that the rec committee came up with.
Yeah. I'm going to put every, all of that kind of stuff's going on tomorrow. I do have three dimensional renderings of ideas we have for that space. And I will be putting those up. I, I will figure it out.
Um, as far as the grants go, did we get to, like, kind of, we put all our listers up on?
Their, their mapping codes were updated. Um, you'll have to ask the listers specifically what that means for their records. Um, I just got them the money for it. Uh, but I believe it's, it was. It's mapping. It's updating the mapping codes, um, which does something for them. And I, maybe I will, I will ask the listers specifically what the outcome of that is for them. Surveys, okay. Yep. So anything else on grants? Okay, next. Next and last. Oh, yeah.
I, I, I'm sorry. I, I have a question about grants, Rebecca.
Sure.
Have any grants been applied for, uh, it's Mike Slattery, by the way. I'm sorry. Have any grants been applied for on behalf of our small businesses in our village designations? Every year, the state makes hundreds of thousands of dollars available to help businesses, struggling businesses. Uh, like we have right here in Pownell. So as much as I think it's cool to have the skating rink and everything else, I think economic growth as dictated by our town plan would be important to address at this time. Has anything been done about that?
So are you speaking about CARES Act funding?
I'm, no, I'm talking about all of the grants that are available through village designations through, through the state.
Right.
Year.
So, so this Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Program is, it's not a, it's not a grant program for funding. Um, but it is for building the capacity so you can qualify for that funding. Um, if you're speaking about COVID relief for small businesses, a lot of those need to be applied for by the businesses themselves. Um, and also we were unqualified, we did not qualify for some of the federal programming because our tax, um, collection was actually up from the year prior during COVID. Um, uh, and a lot of the qualifications for some of those programs, uh, when you're talking about the municipality actually applying for them, um, was that your tax collection had to be down, uh, and that you had to have the lowered, um, income compared to the state and county levels. Um, but you know, listen, I, I am constantly searching and seeking and looking for opportunities. And if you come across something you want to send it to me, I'm talking to the BRCRC on the regular. I'm subscribed to a bunch of different, you know, uh, programs that, um, I'll show you different opportunities for grants. If I see it, I'll chase it. I'm happy to chase it. I've been, um, I was just up to full time about two months ago. So I'd, I'd love to have some more work to do in that regard, Mike.
Yeah, that's fine. What you're talking about is completely unrelated to what I'm talking about. Um, it, it is a separate set of grants. It's pretty common in the state and I think we really need to look into it. Um, I will send you everything that I had when I was on the planning commission, um, and contacts within the state. And, um, we need to follow up on it. Uh, there, there are a lot of people struggling here in Pownell and we need to help them out.
Mike, that'd be great. Please send me everything and many hands make light work. I really appreciate that.
Thanks.
Okay. And so anything else on grants? No? Okay. Um, so lastly is the newsletter. So I've written.
I, I had my hand up. Did, did you not see it?
Yeah, Rebecca, I think we're, th- these should be held off for public comment at the end.
Yeah. So well, at the end it could public comment.
Right. We have another section of public comment.
Okay. So the newsletter, I've written you all an email recently letting you know I'd like to get the town newsletter started again. And I think that especially after moving on from coordinating all this audit work and now that I recently was given full time hours, I'm in a good position to put some time into getting that, you know, resurrecting the old newsletter. So, um, I know that on Monday's budget meeting, you put in a line item for six thousand for a paper version. And the reason why, I mean, it was Angie's idea originally, because one of the weaknesses that we find often in, um, you know, in town is, you know, lack of communication. Although why didn't, why don't I know this? I don't know what's happening in the town. So the idea is that we could do, um, a monthly electronic and emailed newsletter. Um, which then we could also put out special editions if something comes up that we want to get out quickly. But then quarterly, we could synopsize the important things and send out a very inexpensive uh, flyer, paper version to our citizens. Um, so that's, I, my goal is for next week to, um, uh, have to work on a newsletter, get it going again and hopefully releasing it by the end of that week or early the following. So at the beginning of every month, I'm gonna ask for the board to send me what they want reflected in the newsletter so that I can cover everything that's needed. And that's it for all of my stuff. And then that's done for me. Yep. Don't speak up. Sorry.
Yeah. Rebecca, we can't hear anything that goes on. It's even worse than the other nine.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Angie, speak loud.
The declaration of the official intent of the Pownell Town to reverse certain expenditures from the proceeds of the Endeavoring bond resolution for the town hall project.
Okay, Rebecca, I was gonna have you read this because we could read.
Okay, and I'm loud.
The board is going to vote on this to accept this tonight and sign it. Yeah, so that we can move this along.
Okay. So the, all three articles? Okay, so the legal, this is the warning that it'll be. The legal voters of the town of Pownell, Vermont are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Pownell Center Fire Station in the town of Pownell on Tuesday, March second, twenty twenty-one, between the hours of ten o'clock and the forenoon, in the forenoon AM, at which time the polls will open and seven o'clock in the afternoon PM, at which time the polls will close to vote by Australian ballot upon the following article of business. Article one, to hear reports of town officials and take action thereon. Article two, to see if the voters will authorize its treasurer to receive taxes until they become delinquent. And then article three is shall the town of Pownell ratify and confirm the action taken at the October twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen special meeting, authorizing the construction of a town office building at an estimated cost of eight hundred sixty-five thousand dollars and cover the cost thereof through the issuance of bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars. The expenditure of one hundred and seventy-five thousand from the municipal office fund and the application of ninety thousand from undesignated surplus funds. And this is the resol, this is a resolution that, that the board needs to sign, correct? And that, that language of article three came from, it's, it's all from our bond attorney.
Can I entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I can't hear, I can't hear Angie at all, please.
I'll make the motion to, uh, uh, to accept the, uh, the articles as they were read by our board liaison.
Second half.
Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
The board will need to sign.
Uh, the board needs to sign. Do you need everybody's signature?
Yes, all, all board.
So can you all please stop in when Linda's here and sign this or?
Well, the only, the only one that needs to stop is me.
Oh, just Mike. Sorry, Mike. Just need you.
I'll be there tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. We'll leave it out for you.
That'd be helpful.
You don't have to sign it, Ronnie. Just Mike. Okay, moving on.
Can I ask one question tonight?
I think we all have to sign.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mike. You're the only one that has to come in.
I understand that.
You don't like it up early. I'm sorry.
Are there any other by, ballot articles that are gonna be discussed tonight?
That's next.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So moving on to finalize ballot articles.
We're gonna back up one moment.
Back it up one moment?
Let everybody sign.
Okay, sorry.
Everybody sign. Part, part of this warning is to put your dates in for your, um, informational meeting. Okay, the informational meeting needs to be held within ten days prior to the election. I'm recommending the board hold two. I want to see the board hold one at the beginning of February. And I'd like to see the board hold one within the, the ten days. So I picked out dates.
What are they, ma'am?
I wanna, the reason why I want to do the earlier one is due to absentee voting so that this information gets out. You know, so that people have it before they've already, you know, are trying to vote early. Um, the one that we need to put on this warning, which falls into your, your window of your ten days, is Wednesday, February twenty-four at seven PM.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody, Mike? Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm good. Yep. Yeah, I'm good. Now, these are, these are via Zoom, correct, Linda? Just so everyone knows.
Correct. And it will also be inserted into this very warning that you just signed.
Right. I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that.
Yeah. Okay. I'll give you the date on the other that I picked out. The beginning of the month, February fourth.
I'm good.
Fourth at seven PM.
So we want February fourth at seven PM and February twenty-fourth at seven PM?
Yes.
Mike, does that work?
Yep, yep, I'm good.
For Thursday evening.
Everybody else okay with that?
Except for one. One is Wednesday. Okay, so.
That's February fourth at seven PM.
Yeah, that's on a Thursday.
That's a Thursday. And then February twenty-fourth, that's a Wednesday at seven PM.
Yes.
Is that okay with everybody?
I'm good with that.
They're gonna be your informationals on these three articles.
Okay.
And the reason for article one and two is because we cannot, due to COVID, um, be able to vote on the floor. And this is to enable the voters of the town of Pownell to be able to vote by Australian ballot. Just to be clear.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to finalize ballot articles. Do we have a list that we did the other night?
No, we don't have that list. What, what you're doing tonight is the acceptance of this one. We already final. We already finalized it.
So we have a petition. You want to read this, Rebecca, because you're so loud?
Because I'm so loud? Okay, excellent. Happy to do it. I am loud. I, I embrace it. Okay. Um, the, the petition says pursuant to 17 V S A 2642 A3, capital A, the undersigned registered voters of town of Pownell hereby petition the select board to add the following article to the warning for the town annual meeting to be held on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. Shall the town of Pownell reinstate the positions of three internal auditors to serve the town with the same terms and in the same capacity as in the past, including but not limited to regularly auditing the books and preparing the end of year town report. And that was received on the, uh, on time and it has 153 confirmed signatures. So that is-
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so, we have to motion.
Make a motion. Add it to our ballot. Per uh, not all the requirements.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second you.
Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Anything else on that? All right, so then we're going to move on to approved CAT TV contracts.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Can I just ask, are there any more ballot articles, like the budget?
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
You're welcome. All right, so I have-
Okay, what you have before you is the CAT TV contracts. One contract is, brings us from January of 2021 to June 30th of 2022. That's your annual contract that we discussed that the board wanted for the $4,800.
Right.
This particular contract is the one that brings us from January 2021 to the end of our fiscal year so that we get billed in the remainder of our fiscal year. It's a six month.
So it's basically for a year, but they've just broken it down-
Broken it out.
Broken it out to two?
Yes.
All right.
Make a motion. Is that the contract? As it's written for the two parcels, six months apart.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, am I the only one that has to sign this? Yep. Okay.
One more item.
One more item. Approved redeemed mobile home funds to go back to the capital fund. And I assume that this is a physicist.
Yes, it is. This was like- Property taken by the town of Pownell at tax sale, it's now redeemed. So the money came from, the proceeds need to go back into the capital fund.
So does that mean the person paid for it?
Yes.
Right, right. So the town purchased it. The town purchased it. We paid for it from the capital fund.
Yeah.
The ta- they paid back the, their money and they have their home and we have our money with some interest.
Okay.
And I'm just requesting that it go back into the capital fund and the little bit of interest we earned with it as it was capital fund money.
All right.
I think it was like $1,400.
$1,444.63.
We just need a motion to return the monies to the capital.
Motion to return the money to the capital fund on the mobile home.
I have a quick question.
Not until the end, thank you. Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
How about me?
Oh, Mike, I'm so sorry you're not here, Mike.
Well, you're going to be happy that I'm not there, okay? Believe me.
I'm sorry, Mike.
Aye.
Okay, yeah, but I took money from you today. You're not going to make me sick, are you?
No, it didn't happen till later.
Okay, good. All right. Oh my God. So now, we can go and open up public comments.
I have, I have one thing before I forget it on public comment.
Sure, my God.
And we may even already have the answer to it, I'm not sure. But I know that e- even um, the other night when we were on Zoom, Monday and Tuesday, um, I have an awful time hearing you, Angie. So is there a way, there's got to be something that we can put there, a microphone in the middle of the table or, or a speaker or something that we can purchase now to, to make it better until we get the system up and running that Rebecca has already, you know, kind of purchased?
I, I think that's a good idea. I think probably it's just something like a, either a USB or just a plug-in microphone for the, uh, for the laptop.
I can ask, I can ask Chuck.
Yeah.
I can ask Chuck.
I mean, we, we really need something because, because honestly, I can't hear, I couldn't hear Ellen very, you know, Angie, when they're, when you're away from it, even Jamie being across the table. So I think we really need to do something before our next meeting, whatever, whatever it is.
Okay.
I'll reach out to Chuck, no problem.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if you have a question, please raise your hand and please state your name and remember three minutes, Mike.
Hold on, let me get the, let me get- I gotta get to my, that part of my phone. Sorry, give me, okay, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead, Marlena.
Um, hi, yes. Um, I'd like to address the board regarding all of uh, these grants for parks. And I just want to know, um, in the past, when park grants have been brought up, it was met with a lot of resistance and taxpayers wanted to um, uh, request that a complete cost analysis be conducted prior to moving forward with any type of park development. So I'm just curious, is the, the select board going to be doing any type of financial analysis on any of these park improvements with these grants? Because after all, we don't want taxpayers to think that it's going to cost less if it becomes a financial burden. In addition, because these types of projects don't bring in any revenue to the town, we want to make sure that we are appropriating monies and, and putting our time and effort into improvements in the town where it does matter. Um, in addition, will a town be looking at grants for the town building? Um, building improvements of perhaps the current building or a potential different building if um, the bond doesn't pass? And improvements to roads, all of which do bring money into the town. Thank you. And I may have other questions on other topics, so I'm guessing it's three minutes per topic based on your policy, correct?
Nope, it's not. So here, another question, go ahead and ask it now, please.
Well, we, let's, she has a minute forty seconds left. So why, why couldn't we answer that question and then give her a minute forty seconds?
Rebecca, you just said that you were going to do an annual-
Yes, we, we would absolutely hand you a financial, a budget analysis, including uh, you know, maintenance on it, things like that. I wouldn't even ask for the money without doing that. In fact, you can't even apply for a grant without doing that kind of a budget analysis. Um, regarding um, why park grants? Well, because I'm talking about the Parks and Rec Committee. Um, I'm always searching for other grants for other things. I've been madly searching for money that we could potentially apply to the town hall, as you guys all know. I've been working very closely with Jim Sullivan of the B C R C. He's been helping me try to fund, um, funding resources for things like that. And also, there is a benefit to developing um, the recreational opportunities down at our town green because this is a village center. That's called building capacity. All of the advice that I have been given, I have been talking to anyone who knows anything. And all the advice I've been given is that your little town needs to show that it can do little tiny projects from start to finish. And that is how you qualify for the larger programs, the larger programs. Pownell just does not have capacity. We don't have all of the resources to completely do the back end of a grant if they're very large programs. Um, the roads crew is constantly going after grants. In fact, it's a large portion of how um, the roads are um, paid for. The other thing is that the roads crew has capacity. So because they have equipment, they have staff, they have a, a road manager, they have their own building, they have their own resources. So they do qualify for much larger grants because of that capacity.
Those have been very successful.
Very successful. And, and the advice that I've been given from multiple sources is that Pownell, in order to start really setting up that, showing that they can qualify for larger programs, is you have to do the smaller ones first. You just have to do the smaller ones first. And bringing what they really want to see, if they want it for economic development on a town-village, I just had this conversation with Jonathan of the B C R C. If, in order for economic development in your town center to happen, they want to see it as a place where people come for multiple reasons, for community gathering. It is not a nothing. It's not, not important. In fact, it's central to bringing the resources that we seek, that we want to bring to our village center. Um, you know, so I do, I do want to emphasize that.
It's very important.
It is very important. And I have been, you know, if, if I can find money for that town hall, I, I-
I'm sure you will.
And if citizens have ideas and they see a grant opportunity that comes by them, please send it to me. I will research it. I will chase it. You know, I can't be everywhere all the time. I will keep looking and as I said to Mike, you know, many hands make light work.
Right.
We're a community. We need to work together.
Absolutely. Not always trying to pull us apart.
Yep, Harry.
Well, that's the other thing is by improving our village center by use of the, by multiple uses of our green, this is also what Mike Slattery mentioned earlier as far as helping our businesses out. As if they're happen to be in our village um, designation, that will open up grant opportunities for them also. I mean, this, you, you have to start showing that we can uh, prove ourselves basically um, from start to finish. And uh, that will allow us more opportunity. I saw the growth, that, that's what they did in Bennington. Um, and we're behind the wheel, we're, we're learning, we're, we're, we're moving forward. We are working on these things, so.
All right, any questions, please?
So I'd like to give a shout out to the former Economic Development Committee members, Matt Barland, Gerald Petrazella, Shannon McLennethan, who are very well versed with um, everything Rebecca brought forth tonight regarding economic development. Um, who were turned down for any type of mention regarding private-public partnerships, which it seems that we're currently embracing. Very well versed and, and interactive with the B C R C as well regarding what it takes to develop um, the economy in a town and bring in development, as well as being told on a number of occasions that parks and recreation had nothing to do with it. So um, I'm glad we're moving in that direction, but I'd like to give a shout out to the um, people who paved the way, to the pathfinders for that. My second question has to do with what happens if the articles to um, eliminate the, or appoint the town clerk and the treasurer, and I can't remember all of them, if those fall through or if they pass. So if they pass, what type of guarantee will the board provide the community to ensure that there are no individuals appointed to these positions who perhaps through social media posts have bullied, harassed or victimized any taxpayer in order to ensure taxpayers have a safe, secure environment to come to to conduct town business? In addition, um, how will the town or how will the select board be validating productivity standards, goals, guidelines to ensure that if everybody moves to a salaried position that the taxpayers have some sort of way of measuring that um, the individuals are performing based on goal-setting and productivity standards and benchmarks? Thank you.
I have to prove evaluations.
Evaluations are through the board, the board. The same as anybody else.
That, that actually doesn't answer the question.
I would point out that many of the uh, many of those positions uh, when they're currently, as they're currently being uh, performed, that we're looking to hire are currently unsupervised. They don't report to anybody because they're elected positions. By making them elected, they are now accountable to the board.
Appointed.
Uh, by making them appointed, I'm sorry. By making them appointed, they're, they would then be accountable to the board and they, they would bring in supervision with a reason on now. Um, uh, I, I also believe that, that that's going to push us toward a, a, a more uh, nonpartisan, more objective and uh, uh, and more professional town office.
So does that mean that we're hiring a town administrator to perform all of the management and oversight of all these new employees?
No, your time is up. Thank you. We're answering your other question.
Uh, so again, uh, uh, again, today, they don't report to anybody. Going forward, if they, if those ballot articles pass, they will report to the select board. So uh, uh, we're bringing in a level of, of supervision that doesn't currently exist. That's, that's one of the many benefits of doing it.
Just so we stay on the same subject, I didn't go to Tuesday's meeting. Have those ballots been approved? For, by the board?
Yes, the ones that I posted on, yes, I think, did I send it to you, Jim?
Uh, you, you did send it, but I didn't know if it was approved by the board. Thank you very much. That's all I wanted to know.
Yep.
Yep, it was approved Tuesday night. All right, can I entertain a motion to go into-
Is there anyone else with, wait, there's other hands up. There's other hands up. Um, Yep, yep, it's Jenny.
Hi, Jenny Dewar. Um, I just wanted to, uh, you, you guys have added this position of administrative assistant, but it's not been posted anywhere that I can see.
Tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Um, and will you have, um, I, I mean, I think it's a, it's a great idea to actually move to um, having positions hired versus elected. Um, but will you have complete job descriptions before the election so that people really know what those jobs are and they're ready to go? If that does pass, if they do pass, then those job descriptions need to be ready to go.
Jenny, we'll make sure that we do it.
Can I finish? Thanks. Um, I'd like to um, just make sure that's um, made clear to everybody in the town before we vote for it. Be, um, especially after the, the mess of the auditor stuff last year. So just um, would like to know all that. And if these positions do become staff, um, I really do believe you need a boss, not the select board. You're not full-time as a select board. You need someone in the office full-time. So I would hope and push for the board to begin a search immediately for a town administrator as the town voted for to act in this capacity.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You have a good night too, Angie. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to take your advice, make sure that we have-
I think that's a great idea with the job descriptions. Yep.
Yep.
Yep, I can start, I can start, I can start doing that. Yep, absolutely.
Any more?
Um, well, there's uh, J- Jim, did you want to say something? I think you just, oh, go ahead.
Just one fast que- oops, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, just one fast question. On those ballot articles, which are good to have the townspeople vote on, are, if someone is appointed, are they there until, and what's the mechanism for unappointment? Or it, will there be a type of situation where it is a possible, possible um, same term of what they are now? And then they have to reappoint so that others maybe could apply for it? Thank you.
Um, if it's, if it becomes a hired position, then it's going, that person's going to work for the town and then it, they would fall under the same category.
I would, before you say that though, I'm going to write to the V L C T tomorrow because it is possible that some of those have still appointment limits. So let me just ask that and answer that at the next meeting, okay? Because before-
That is something that we talked about.
I just, I would not speak definitively on that till we research that.
We may, we may set uh, term limits.
Thank, thank you, Rebecca.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I, I have an, an actual different question. Um, going back to the stuff that Cynthia presented-
She used her three minutes.
It's a separate question and I believe the policy states that as long as you're not speaking about something somebody else already asked, you can, you can ask another question.
I set the policy in the beginning of the year when I became-
There's a policy in the policy book, Angie, that all select boards follow. And the question is-
Have a good night.
The question is, the stuff that Cynthia brought forward, will we be, will the-
Can I have a motion to go in executive session, please?
Is there anybody else that hasn't asked it?
Everyone else has spoken.
Okay.
It's 9:35.
Make the motion to go in the executive session.
Can I have a second?
Uh, we need to say what?
For um, legal for the friends of audit.
Will the financial system be implemented prior to the election? That's very rude, Angie. That's very rude, Angie. Will the, will the financial-
Thank you. Go ahead. All right, can I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Jamie did that.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Angie? Aye.
Hey. I am going- What?
Will there be any action taken, just so we know what CAT TV is going to do?
Hmm, I don't think we need to take action because it's probably just administrative what's going to happen.
That's fine, just, just wanted to make sure we did that, too.
All right, I'm going to remove, um, everyone so we can speak with our lawyer.